Here. Karen, do you want to introduce yourself? It is Board Appreciation Week. And so we've invited some students from two of our schools and one for our board members and for our audience to show up here and highlight the talented skills that they get to perform every day in our school. So with that, we'll be shortly introduced to the Principal Board of Ebarca trying to say a few words.
Thank you all for being here. I'm very, very excited to have the board of Ebarca here to thank our board for their hard work. Mr. Ronan has been maybe not working with our students each week on the floor as well as countless hours outside of our time back to time to spend time working with our students, building relationships with them, and taking advantage of the monitor's velocity. So how do we get out of your way? We're very excited to have you here.
So Karen's something in the light phone. I love her bow. She just loves you again. Thank you, Board of Ebarca. We love you. We appreciate you. And then we have the students. If you'd like to come on up. All right, as we're setting up, we have another introduction to make. We are fortunate to have Weekly Elementary with us next. And as we're setting up, I was going to have the Principal, this Mike Ender, come on up. And then she tells about the students here as well as the Harmony Project and her books. So this Mike Ender, the Principal. Good evening. Thank you for having us. We're honored to be here to perform for the board tonight. I just want to say thanks for everything everybody does. So we partnered with Harmony Project KC this year. This is our first year partnering with them. And this is our second grade. And this class has been working all year. They just started on reporters because it's a new project they're working on. And the pilot is amazing. Sure, so Harmony Project KC has been operating out of the Northeast Community Center for five years now. These are 200 community kids that come from 25 different schools. And in spring of 2019, we had a special opportunity with Dr. Shepherd and the people who are part of KC to come together and pilot something really special, an intensive daytime music education for kids. So the three-year pilot with Principal Ender and the incomparable KCPs looking teacher Miss May Williams. She has been amazing to partner with. And so, like she said, this is year one. They've had reporters for three weeks. They are so proud of you. And next year, maybe they'll be having reporters when you're running on by. We have a student to read, but he's not here tonight, so we're going to read his heart. Let's make the world a brighter place, let's fill the world with lights of joy. This is our special message for you this evening. We hope you enjoy now our next song, "Street Feet." We take turns playing the steady beat on the keyboard. Is this a tune you're going to play? Now, we will perform "Hot Responts," our first song for the recorder. We play the notes A, B, and G, which spell the word "wow." We have a student to read, but he's not here tonight, so we're going to read his heart. Let's make the world a brighter place, let's fill the world with lights of joy. This is our special message for you this evening. We hope you enjoy now our next song, "Street Feet." We take turns playing the steady beat on the keyboard. Now, we will perform "Hot Responds," our first song for the recorder. We play the notes A, B, and G, which spell the word "wow."
This week, we learned... That's when we learned our note on the... A is a space note because it is located in the second space on the staff. The next note we call "Twenty of the Eight" is a space from Dario. This helps us remember that A is a space note. We play colon, half note, quarter note, and quarter red. Every time we play on the red, our teacher answers "Penny." Sometimes they go home and they're talking to the coin. And horses and angels, such as, get rich.
I did a job. If you are a Karen from these fights over, can you please stand up or guard against? If you had organized a picture with students in Weekly, I think we should do that. So if you could pick some photos, okay? Could you guys take together?
Over this way.
Okay. Awesome. Big smiles. Couple of these, right? And I'm going to take home my phone, so I'm going in. Okay? All right. Excellent. Thank you.
All right.
I know people are in the process. Come on, get ready to exit. You can just give us a few minutes. I'd love to be able to do this with you all in here. As you know, this is Board Appreciation Week. And for many of you in here who are Karen and students and staff members, these seven members here dedicate their time, they volunteer their time, they represent constituents throughout the five different districts, and then we have two at-large members. But these are the people that are responsible for ensuring that your children get the education that they deserve, to see the students perform to the magnitude of what they just did. And these kids at Weekly, this has only been one semester of working with these kids and introducing them to where they can start reading notes already. The power of what this will do for them as they continue to move up, we understand what the research says around music development and how it really helps to propel kids to become high achievers, and to start at this stage is a phenomenal thing. But without this group of individuals here, a lot of what we're trying to do right now, these pious initiatives, being bold, none of that is possible. Our school district is in a much better place because of people like them, because of people like you all that support us. What I will tell you as superintendent, I think people believe that we like to kiss up to keep a job. I'm not, I'm just saying this, like, I'm not, that's not who I am. I choose to be here because I want to make a difference, but I choose to be here because I can work with these people. I'm going to a national superintendent conference tomorrow, and there will be a number of horror stories that I will hear about how these superintendents are working with their boards, and it will allow for me to continue to remain humble around the work that we need to do here. And I've said this to several of you individually, I may be the luckiest superintendent because I've had two boards that I've been able to work with that have allowed for this district to continue to make the kind of progress that we're making. We are no longer at the bottom in the state of Missouri. Those days are behind us. We are very close to this accreditation, and we think that with the work that we have to do and what we're going to continue to engage in, this district is going to take off. And we hope that you all continue to stay by and support us in this journey. So I wanted to personally show my appreciation to each of you, and I want to give you this. And then we have other items that we wanted to pass over to you. And just thank you all for your service. So we also have some from our students at the sale. If you have an opportunity, you just, you need to open it in front of the card. Okay, there's a gift and a birthday card, but this, these are our students' products of our high school students. Oh, yeah. So Dr. Hayes. Hey, everyone. This is Dr. Hayes, the school of the sale, and that you all would be proud of.
I want to say that in two minutes, though. The school are very proud to be able and honored to be able to participate in all of this. Um, we didn't get to talk to you, but we're honored to be here and come and work here. And, um, we have to be, Dr. Hayes, to be part of this. Thank you.
Push it back up.
They want to move our tables back.
Hold on, Trey. Because he had to move.
We need to move the desk.
Moving it back up.
We just push it back.
I think that's good right there, because we're normally, well, Marla, I think, did you go too far? I don't think we're in front of the podium.
She wants to be in front of him, though.
Yeah, I think we're more like this.
All right. Scooch it. Scooch it. It's just, I didn't say it again. I was saying, absolutely.
Thanks for getting my back.
You got my back.
See you in the morning. Likewise. Like I said, I feel sorry for them. They have a shot of them down.
Bye, Nate. See you.
Get myself organized here. Good evening, everyone. The regular meeting of the Kansas City Public Schools Board of Directors of February 12th is called to order. Thank you so much for coming this evening, and thank you to everyone who's here right now and those who were with us earlier. What a wonderful start to this night. So I will ask the secretary to please call the roll.
Ms. Manser?
Here.
Mr. Abarka?
Present.
Ms. Cortez?
Here.
Mr. Hogan? Dr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Wasserstrom?
Here.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Here.
Thank you. I will ask my colleagues to look at the agenda. It would be in order to receive a motion to approve the agenda for this evening's meeting.
So moved.
Seconded.
It has been moved and seconded. The secretary will call the roll.
Ms. Manser?
Yes.
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan? Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Wasserstrom?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Thank you. The agenda is approved. This evening, we will have the workshop presentation. The chair recognizes Dr. Bedell, who will introduce the report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Today, we will have our workshop presentation on Board Policy 1.1, Eye Ready, and APR in five of the areas that the state holds us accountable to, and then also a quick update on Senate Bill 319. So at this time, I will pass the podium over to our Deputy Superintendent, actually, our Director over Assessment, Research, and Accountability, Mr. Jerome Williams.
All right. Good evening. For those of you who may not know who I am, I'm Jerome Williams, Work and Accountability, Research, and Assessment. Okay, and again, we're going to give a monitoring report update on 1.1 Eye Ready and then Senate Bill 319. I'll start off with Senate Bill 319. So students are identified as possibly being Senate Bill 319 candidates based off of the Eye Ready Diagnostic Assessment. So those students have already been identified based off of the winner diagnostic results, and what they're doing right now is they're going through mandatory tutoring, and I believe they're four and a half or five weeks into that tutoring session. The students will be tested again in the spring, and from that point, it will be determined whether or not they will have to go to mandatory summer school before remediation. And from that point, it will be determined whether or not they will have to go to mandatory uh, summer school before remediation. So Board Policy 1.1, um, high achieving critical thinkers. All scholars will demonstrate proficient or advanced performance on state assessments. Students that are scoring below those levels will demonstrate growth throughout the academic year. All scholars will demonstrate literacy, numeracy, and critical thinking skills at or above grade level, both as individuals and whole groups. And all scholars will be social, emotionally, and academically ready for kindergarten. So in particular regards to I-Ready, these, these numbers here that you're seeing, these diagrams, charts, are going to be the diagnostic results for fall to winter testing. Again, the diagnostic is kind of where the student's at. And then it will be married with online instruction and a personalized component for students moving forward. But we're looking at just the diagnostic results, fall and winter comparison, number of students tested, um, that have paired assessments, meaning they took the fall diagnostic within the diagnostic window and the winter diagnostic within the diagnostic window. It's 7,238 for reading. The stacked bar chart on the left is going to be the results for fall. And then right to the right of that is going to be results for winter. As you can see, tier one has shifted from 14% to 25% from fall to winter testing. Tier two, which is one grade level below, has gone from 30% to 35. And then tier three has gone from 56% to 40%. So we've seen a lot of growth within students moving um, up from tier two to tier one. And then from tier three to tier two on the reading assessment. And keep in mind that with I-Ready's linking and correlation studies, um, pretty confident that the students that are in that tier one range are going to score proficient or advanced on the state assessment at the end of the year. Also, keep in mind, this is just winter, right? So the students will go through the program for the rest of the school year. They'll be tested again in the spring and those numbers will look significantly better in the spring. So we've also taken the I-Ready diagnosed by tiers and broken it up in student groups. So we're looking at uh, students that received intervention, students in the ELL or English Language Program, and then sped. So for students receiving intervention, we've seen a 5.9% increase for students in tier one, 18.6 for tier two. And the far column of the table on the right is the difference between winter and fall. And it says negative 24.5. Some people may say, why is that green? If it's negative, that's because 24.5% of those students moved from tier three in either tier two or tier one. So that's a positive when you're looking at it that way. Um, English Language Learners, 7.6, tier one, 12.6 in tier two, and negative 20.2 in tier three, at risk for tier three. For special education students, we're at 4.7, 12% and minus 16.7. Again, very good growth for those students that are moving out of that tier three range and the tier two, and then tier two into tier one. So I-Ready's Instruction Usage Report. So this is the average weekly usage of I-Ready instruction by grade for reading. The horizontal green bar that you see is the healthy range that I-Ready recommends that students spend on online instruction, right? So all of our grade levels are in that healthy range. Students spending 30 to 45 minutes per week using online instruction. And if you look at the table at the bottom, that's looking at your pass rates, right? So when some of my colleagues talk about the data in depth later on in the presentation, you, you'll see some of this reflected there because 30 to 49 minutes spent in instruction and pass rates of 70% or above will lead students more likely to meet their typical or stretch growth at the end of the year. So for math, we've got fall and winter comparison. The end count for math, number of students tested, seven, 7,466 paired assessments. Um, I'll also state that all students that come into the school district are going to take an I-Ready diagnostic. They may not necessarily be included in a district report because the windows are finite, right? And it's a norm reference test, also a criterion reference test. So we can't change a window in fall and make it August 13th to November. And that's to match up with what people are doing nationally. So those windows stay pretty static for each term. But any student that comes in, let's say they missed the uh, fall diagnostic test and they show up in October, they will take a diagnostic with I-Ready because you cannot be assigned lessons or any of the online instruction without the system knowing where you're currently at, right? But this is just looking again at paired, paired scores. So students who had a fall and a winter within the testing window. 7,466 kids. Um, for tier one math, we've seen some very good growth in, in tier one, 7% to 23%. And tier two, 41, 47. Tier three, we're at 50% in the fall and that's dropped to 30% um, for, for winter. Again, we're going to see these numbers shift drastically positively when they get more online instruction between now and when they sit for the spring assessment in May. We've broken it up again by, by student group. So intervention, ELL, again, English, English Language Learners and your sped kids. Um, the differences in tier one for all three groups have been positive, 8.8, 8.5 and 7.2. Tier two equally as strong. And more impressively, you've got almost 38% in, in the students that are receiving intervention, 31% English Language Learners, and almost a little over 26% for sped that have moved out of that at risk for tier three, right, which is, which is amazing for these different student groups. We're looking at the uh, I-Ready instructional usage for math, very strong as well. Green is a healthy, healthy mark for online instruction. All of our grade levels are above that mark, right? So they're averaging, I mean, if you look at sixth grade, they're spending 45 minutes a week um, using I-Ready. And the pass rate is 74%. So when we look at sixth grade, you'll see very good growth for kids. And the median growth for meeting typical growth at the end of the year for that grade level, it's about 150% of students that are going to meet their typical growth. And then 80% that are going to meet their stretch growth. Typical is what you should grow in, within a year, stretch is anything above that.
Mr. Williams, before you go any further, I, I think it's important that I revisit with our board that, as you stated earlier, there's a very close correlation of how our students perform from a growth standpoint on I-Ready in alignment to when they take the MAP assessment. And if you all, people who are in here that may not have heard the presentation when we went over our APR report, our district scored uh, exceedings on the state report card in expected growth in both math and reading. And I think a lot of it has to do with the fact that we're able to diagnose where students are. And this instrument allows for us to be able to close gaps. The ultimate goal of I-Ready is to help our students get as close as possible to being able to access the state standards at grade level. And if we can get our kids there, we have a much better chance of those students being able to score proficient or advanced on the assessment. But irregardless of that, we are exceeding what the state is expecting us in terms of when, how our kids show up when they come and how they finish. And I wanted to make sure that I, I shared that with everybody because that is reflected on the state report card.
Okay, so now I'm going to introduce Allison Heil and she's going to take a, a deeper look into the uh, ELL students data.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. Uh, my name is Allison Heil and I have the distinct privilege of serving as the Director of Language Services and Cultural Equity for Kansas City Public Schools. Um, tonight, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about I-Ready results for our English Language Learners. So um, you had a chance to look at this a few minutes ago, but here you can see reading for, a reading growth in our English Language Learners. So if you notice, uh, we moved 27% of ELs out of tier three into tier two. Um, many of our students naturally begin in tier three just due to the nature of being English Language Learners and um, their, their language proficiency level. So uh, over the past year, we have been focusing on co-teaching. So we are seeing stronger practices and intentional planning in schools. We are providing increased and consistent professional development with our elementary English as a second language teachers. And our teachers are also using pathways very consistently as an intervention during the ELA block. So we've made sure that all of our ESOL teachers are trained in pathways. Um, if you look at middle school, so Jerome thought, thankfully pulled out elementary and middle school so we could really dive into what students are doing. Um, in middle school, we're seeing less movement out of tier three. Um, we are in the process of a second year implementation of the Bridges to Academic Success Reading Curriculum. So that is for students that are pre-literate and, or have low native language literacy at the middle school level, of which we have a lot of students. They have not had access to schooling. So they are um, learning how to read in, for the first time ever. Um, so that is a big program at Northeast Middle. And then we are focusing on co-teaching for our more advanced English Language Learners. Also, at the elementary and middle school level, we should be seeing our beginning English Language Learners working in Imagine Learning, uh, language development software. So that focuses on language acquisition. Um, and so that is also something that students are uh, on every week. Alright, and then if you look at the next slide, this is then just uh, reading proficiency or reading growth pulled out by grade level. So you can see really the movement at each grade level of our students out of tier three, especially at the lower grade levels. And then at the middle school level, you can see kind of seventh grade compared to eighth grade. Eighth grade is outperforming seventh grade, which we are noticing not just here, but in math and across other subgroups um, and uh, the MAP test as well. So we, we have some work to do at the seventh and eighth grade level. Alright, and so next is math. And here you can see um, more ELLs are actually starting in tier two than in English Language Arts or the reading. Um, and then one half of our tier three ELs moved out of tier three to tier two. So we're very excited about that. In middle school, we saw a slight increase of movement out of tier three, but again, not nearly enough, not what we would like to be seeing. Alright, and then here is math broken out by grade level. So here you can really see the significant movement of students coming out of tier three. In several grades, we have 50% or more um, of ELs are in tier two by the middle of the year. So that's amazing. Um, and then we have between about nine and 12% of our ELs um, in tier one. So many people tend to think that math is a universal language, which isn't really true. Um, the math tests that the students face are actually language tests and reading tests. So because of that, our ESOL teachers also co-teach in math blocks. So they are working in English Language Arts and in math with their classroom teachers. Um, then uh, if we look at middle school, again, you can see eighth grade is outperforming seventh grade, um, making some gains, but again, not what we would like to see, so. Um, now Ms. Rhea Rivers is going to come and talk to you about intervention. I'm going to fast forward to the slide too.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Okay, there we go.
Let me just say this, uh, because I told her I was going to mess with her earlier. But this is, this is her first time doing this and she was nervous this morning when we went through it. And I shared with her, the first time that I presented in front of a board, I was, I was so nervous. I had a three-button suit. And you know, you're not supposed to button up all three of them? I had all three of them buttoned up when I went up to speak and my superintendent was getting on me about it. He could tell I was nervous, but I'm, you know, I told her, we'll help ease your anxiety. You'll do great tonight.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Well, good evening. I am the Lead Literacy Interventionist for the district. And I'm actually going to speak um, on behalf of all interventions, so reading and math this evening. As interventionists, we actually use various pieces of data, formative and summative assessments, including I-Ready. We create specialized plans for tier three students. And those um, plans are inspired by data. As you can see, something that is very um, I'm, I'm honored to say that we've grown as a team. As you can see, from nine interventionists in elementary, we have grown to 14 elementary interventionists, from five to six secondary. All of the interventionists participate in Nahuas Reading Intervention Training. They have received an in-depth course in pathways to reading as well. As for math, we've grown from nine elementary interventionists to 12 elementary interventionists, which is really awesome. And then secondary, we've gone from two to six. So we're servicing more students, which is the ultimate goal. The use of the I-Ready toolbox is actually um, more for the math interventionist. Um, you won't see the reading interventionists use it so much, especially in elementary. So that's what Erin Dorsey, who is the elementary um, math interventionist, works with her um, teachers on. Um, we implement any resources from the math curriculum map that is provided by our district. So the math interventionists work with um, different um, activities, different lessons that have been created by the coaches in the math curriculum map. So I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the support the interventionists get. The Lead Literacy Interventionists, and it's, it states the lead because it's more than just me. We, there are other coaches that are involved, there's Erin and Marcelina for math. Um, we, they, we review, sorry, lesson plans submitted by interventionists weekly. So they get feedback and we help them create lesson plans that will be tailored to our students. Um, we also observe and provide feedback. We serve as thought partners for our one-on-one planning for each of our interventionists. And as you can see, there's a sample of a lesson plan from one of our wonderful interventionists. When we talk about increasing student achievement, we are centered around data, okay? So we're doing data dives when we're doing those monthly professional learning communities. Um, we use the individualized intervention plans, as you can see on the screen and in your packet. We reflect on students and record the students' performance. We also partake in instructional rounds to reflect on best practices and fine-tune instruction. To go back to what Jerome was speaking about earlier, as you can see, we've made some significant gains in intervention. This is for reading. I'm going to reiterate what he said, that the negative is a positive. We are moving students from tier three to tier two, and also from tier two to tier one. This is our math data as well. Again, as you can see, the objective is to work with our students as a team to make sure that we are providing instruction that they need. And we are looking at the data, so we're not going off our feelings, we're going off of what we know. We're going off the numbers, okay? And then we add our relationships that we, we build with our kids. And then on top of that, we sit down and we think about how we can respond intentionally to their needs. Okay, and now Dr. Jakita Laurie is going to talk to you about special education.
Alright, thank you. Good job. And uh, Dr. Laurie? Really good job. Uh, Dr. Laurie's also a first-timer speaking in front of the board, but she doesn't get the icebreaker that I gave, um, Jakita.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Jakita Laurie and I serve as the Assistant Director of Special Education. I'm very excited today to present to you and discuss special education instruction and share with you the progress our students have made in I-Ready so far this year. The upcoming slide, I will discuss the organizational changes that have been made to support effective co-teaching for special education. We will look at our student data from our K-2 inclusion pilot. We will examine our reading results from I-Ready for our elementary co-teaching classrooms. And we will also review our English Language Arts and Math data for seventh and eighth grade co-teaching classrooms. And I will end with a discussion about how our special education students are growing in our direct instruction classrooms. We, I believe that our greatest impact that we've had so far this year is the impact on the special education instruction by our instructional special education coordinators. This year, we added two additional staff members to support secondary schools to meet the instructional needs of our sped teachers and our students. The team consists of six instructional sped coordinators. And what we did this year is we provided co-teaching training for 120 co-teaching, co-teaching pairs in our And what we did this year is we provided co-teaching training for 120 co-teaching pairs in our district. And we provided the research on the best practices of the four highly effective co-teaching models, which is parallel teaching, team teaching, alternative teaching, and station teaching. And we messaged the expectation that we expect, when we're out in buildings, to see that level of co-teaching happening in all of our co-teaching classrooms. At the secondary level, we have now special education instructional coordinators for all four content areas, math, science, social studies, and English. What we also have done is we are focusing directly with those tested areas at the secondary level. Our elementary secondary, our elementary instructional coordinators consist of two who are working in collaboration with our curriculum and instruction professional development coordinators. And that's gonna be based off their grade content area. And then our secondary instructional coordinators, they have formed a professional learning community with our curriculum and instruction coordinators, and they meet weekly to discuss what is happening in those co-teaching classrooms. They're helping our co-teaching pairs to do lesson plans, and they also are providing job embedded professional development now. So what I will look at now for these next few slides, I'm gonna give you and provide you a lot of data. However, I would like to highlight specifically what our special education students are performing and how they're performing. So our K-2 inclusion pilot consists of three schools, our three hub schools. That's James Elementary, Melcher, and King. So this first slide is about our James School in kindergarten. And on average, in reading and in math, our students have grown 109.5%. You will see in those bullets, those bullet items, it breaks down the movement from Tier 3 to Tier 2, from Tier 2 to Tier 1. So you'll be able to see specifically how our students performed in each content area at each grade level. In reading, 15 out of our 20 students have performed on or above grade level. Out of the top 10 students in those classrooms, in math, six of those students are special education students. And we are very proud of the progress that they have made. Now we look at our secondary grade level at James Elementary. Their average growth for reading and math is 68.5. 50% of our sped students had growth of at least 50% in both reading and math within this pilot. Our second hub school is King Elementary. We're looking at kindergarten again. Our special education students grew in their annual typical growth at least 50% in both reading and math. When we look at our first grade, I want to share with you on these particular visuals, there is an area of gray, and Mr. Jerome touched on that. But when a student comes in and say they took the first diagnostic, then it won't count. They have to take both of them to be counted with our data. So that gray area shows the students that we cannot count as fully assessed with both diagnostic periods. But even with that, our first graders showed an average growth in both reading and math of 61%. And with our special education students, their growth for annual, typical, and stretch was at least 25% or greater. So not only are they meeting the expectations of what is expected for all of our students with this grade level assessment, but they're also moving with that stretch growth. That's beyond. That's what moves kids from the Tier 3 to the Tier 2, and the Tier 2 to the Tier 1. And our last hub school is Melcher. Our kindergarten class showed significant growth in reading with the annual typical growth, stretch growth between 15 to 120%. 100% of our sped students had that improvement, every single one of them in those classes. And then when we look at our second grade level at Melcher, a part of our pilot, our first grade students had the most significant growth, where we had no students in the fall on grade level at all. But when they took that test in math, 56% are now showing on or above grade level. And that's due to the work of co-teaching and inclusion, not pulling those students out to provide their services. That's 104 students, with 23% of those students being special education students that are being impacted by this K-2 inclusion pilot. Our data shows, when our students are in the general education classroom and we're not pulling them, our students grow. Not only do our students with special needs grow, all students grow. All benefit. So now I'm going to transition and focus on the overall data for the elementary co-teaching classrooms. On this slide, I have broken it out from the different networks. We have Network 1, and you'll see the schools that are part of those networks. And in parentheses, those are the grade levels that we have co-teaching classrooms at. So in Network 1, we have 17 English Language Art co-teaching classrooms that serve about 54 sped students and about 200 gen ed students. When we looked at the typical growth in these classrooms, our sped students grew 211% in reading compared to their gen ed peers who grew 122%. In our Network 2 schools, we have 21 co-teaching classrooms that serve about 103 special education students and about 312 gen ed students. The data for this classroom shows that our students grew 186% in reading compared to their gen ed peers at 108%. So inclusion matters. Effective co-teaching practices matter. Now, do we still have students that are two grade levels behind? Yes, we do. But we also show that our students are growing. And when our students grow, we reach student achievement. And now we're gonna look at Network 3. And this is our middle school, our middle school 7th and 8th grade. As you see here, our 7th grade students grew in reading 111%. Now, they did not grow as much as the gen ed peers grew, because they grew at 138%. So we know that we need to figure out what's happening between 6th and 7th grade on why that rate wasn't as equal to or greater than our general education students. However, when we look at 8th grade there, that second year for our kids, our sped students, they scored like 75% higher in math, which is just a few percentage, a couple percentage points above gen ed. And we also grew with 8th grade at 127% compared to the 121 in math for 8th grade. So after that year of being in those co-teaching classrooms, access to that curriculum, getting that differentiated instruction, having that scaffold, having the benefit of having two certified instructors, instructors, excuse me, one being the content specialist and one being that sped teacher who offers that learning specialized instruction, our students are benefiting from that. And our data is showing just mid-year, the amount of growth that our special education students have made. And so for my last slide, which I am so very proud of, is about our special education direct instruction. Now, direct instruction, these are sped-only classrooms. The students have to meet a certain criteria. We look at their IQ. We look at their subscores from their evaluations to determine. You know, in co-teaching, they quite don't have those abilities to make it in co-teaching yet. So we're gonna provide this instruction, this content for the core areas in this direct instruction classroom. So we currently have 11 direct instruction classrooms, serving 54 students in our middle schools. And our prior practices to this year is that our special education teachers, they were doing the best they could with their resources. They were using some modified curriculum, trying to align and teach areas in which they're not certified in, like our math and our ELA, and they were doing the best they could. But this year, with the support of our instructional special education coordinators, there are six of them who are both certified in gen ed and sped, they are able to go into those direct instruction classes and break those standards down for those special education teachers to a level where they feel comfortable, their efficacy is high, and they feel like, okay, now I can teach ELA. Now I know how to teach this Algebra 1 content or the Math 7. And so with that support that they currently have, I am very proud of the growth that our students in these special education classes have had so far this year, with access to the general education curriculum, with support from curriculum and coordinators. Our 7th grade students increased their typical growth in reading, this is grade level, 64% by average. Our 8th graders, they increased their reading by 253%. And then when we look at our math instruction, our 7th graders increased their growth by 116%. And our 8th grade students increased theirs by 130%. So we have still work to do, because our goal is to not have as many students as we have, if any, in that Tier 3. Our goal is to move them. But I do believe we have now in place the supports that we need to do co-teaching effectively, to provide what the special education teachers need, which is training on the curriculum and the support from coordinators on a day-to-day basis, where they can go in and they can lesson plan with them, and they can sit down and they can model in their classrooms. This is the type of work that they're doing today. And I believe because of that work, we are on the upward trend, and that's why we're seeing the level of growth in our special education students this year. Thank you.
Ms. Mancer, so yeah, I do wanna thank you for the presentation. And I remember when we were going through and trying to plan our budget last year around what we needed to do as we tried to respond to the data for our special education students. And I remember having a conversation with School Smart KC. I will say this, they sat in our conference room, and we said, "Here's the things that we wanna work on in this upcoming year." And we know that there's been a history of how people have invested in this school district, generally investing in initiatives that they felt would be the best fit for our district. And I remember having a conversation with the WOSS and said, "Hey, we got some things that we really wanna do here that we think could become a game changer for the kids that we're serving." And when we rolled out what we wanted this pilot to look like, he said he fell in love with it right from the beginning. Said, "How much do you need? We're here to support you." And we have a number of funders out there that have stepped up to help us. I wanna thank School Smart KC. There's a number of other funders, as we continue to go through these presentations, that I wanna make sure that I acknowledge as we go through. And there's a number of funders who do this, and they don't want us to acknowledge what they're doing. We have a funder that's given us over a million dollars to do avid and to expand the middle college program, because they believe in what these programs are doing for our kids. Yet, they don't want us to acknowledge them publicly. And I wanna make sure that we're paying our respects to the people that are allowing for us to be innovative, to think outside the box, and help us where our budget can't help us. Watch out for this data, I promise you. Watch out.
Thank you.
Board members, questions? Ms. Wolfsey?
So I will, I'll start backwards then. Loved the presentation on special ed, because I think essentially for me, it's not even a clarifying question. I just wanna confirm, you know, Jerome, is special ed one of the subgroups that we will have to show growth in for accreditation APR? This is huge for us specifically, because we serve a greater percentage of students in special education, as we know, compared to some of our peers. And I know that there's a limit on the number that can take, is it MAP-A? Right, so this, to me, what you're doing now is going to, I think, have a huge effect on... And that's not why we do everything, you know, but I just, I wanna say kudos to the administration to really, like Dr. Bedell said, figure out what it was you needed. Be bold enough to ask, you know, even though it wasn't what somebody else may have been telling us what we needed. And it's clear to me through your presentation that the data is showing you knew exactly what you needed. And when you go and put it together, good for us. We need more of that. So, thank you.
Mr. Barca?
Sure, I got a couple things that I was gonna inquire about. And forgive me as I try to navigate some of the depths here, because you all are obviously wizards at your craft, and I am just some guy on the school board. So please educate me in this moment. First off, for the latter two of you, incredible presentations, great work. You have nothing to be nervous about in the future. You did fantastic. So good of you. Ms. Howell, obviously, you're great, so I just wanna... You've done this a lot, but to our new folks, I have to make sure they acknowledge that. First off, how do we distinguish? How do we distinguish when a child who is otherwise categorized as ELL that may have a learning disability? How do we separate those types of circumstances? And when and how and where do we identify the challenge there? Because I imagine that's something that probably can go unnoticed in places.
So you ask the hardest questions. Thank you. So that is, that is a challenge here and everywhere, right? We have been working diligently with Jakita and Dr. Arnold regarding how we're making sure students aren't falling through the cracks. So for a long time, there was an idea that students had to have language proficiency in order to be classified or receive other kinds of services, and that is simply not the case. So we are working right now on a case-by-case basis. We make sure... I have three ESOL resource teachers that attend PST meetings, problem-solving team meetings, at their network schools, particularly when an English language learner is going to be coming up on the docket, if you will, to make sure that those students are getting the proper interventions and they're being documented, and then advocating for that student if they do need to happen to go farther or possibly enter the testing process. We're also implementing an RTI process at Northeast Middle and East High School, where we have students who come that haven't had access to school. So then it's really difficult to tell if it's a language issue or a developmental issue or something, like a processing issue. And so we're doing, again, kind of the same process there specifically for English language learners with Dr. Arnold and her, I'm not sure, Wakita's... Compliance Officer, Wakita Williams. So we're trying to address these issues and make them more system-wide. We've started meeting with the school psychs every Wednesday to talk about and be a part of the process when they have questions for us about how to measure English language learners, what are data points that make sense to measure and interventions that make sense to provide for students, so.
Ms. Howell, when did we start doing all of this stuff you just shared?
I would say this year, we really were able to start digging in. We've been working slowly towards it, and I will say, within the last year, the state has made great strides in providing actual guidance for both sides of the party. It was kind of a, well, language services or ESL says this, and sped says this, and there was never a come-to-Jesus meeting, I suppose you could say, about all of this. And so, but I will say that this is not anything that is solely a KCPS issue. Districts all over the country struggle with this identification and making sure students are receiving both services, because one does not supersede the other, so.
And the reason why I wanted to ask you that question is because as we've been talking as a team, we wanna make sure that as we start to talk and have these conversations, we've been here now three and a half years. So a lot of this is based on things that we've either been doing or things we haven't been doing since this administration has come on. And we know we've been here three and a half years. We're just now starting to get some of these pieces in place. But ultimately, I wanna be able to measure what we're doing, not from '15 and back, '16 when we came in. And we should be measuring how this district is moving during the tenure of this team that's here now. that's here now.
So thank you for that.
Yes.
And thank you for the hard work you do.
Thank you.
Too many Starbursts. So thank you again for all that you do. I'm going to share with the board later at our spotlight some of the challenges that some of our E L L students have and why we're at with them, but kudos to your progress there. I guess my next question is about the interventionist slide on sixteen. I want to make sure I understand correctly. These interventionists are there to support the previous deck that showcased the math and reading performance groups. Is that correct?
Okay. Will you read?
Yeah. So on sixteen, these interventionists directly correlate to the previous charts on, I guess, slides eight and five and eight in terms of the proficiencies of success, or some of the other charts as well, proficiencies of success, right?
Yes.
So I guess I was curious about when it broke down into, sorry, I'm flipping back and forth here, slides twelve and fourteen, as we get to the secondary level of these, why there aren't more interventionists allocated towards that component, seeing how it looks like we need more support there versus the elementary side.
Well, we're hoping that we can grow and we can do that.
Support from the board is what you're asking for eventually.
Yes.
Perfect. I just want to...
Because that is exactly...
This wasn't planned.
That's exactly... I'm so happy you asked that question, Manny. That's exactly what we want to happen.
Good.
Sorry. But that's what we want to happen. We want to be able to service more students because the proof is in the pudding. When we can help our students, and just on a more personal level, I've been going in and stepping in and helping with interventionists on the secondary level, doing some co-teaching and everything with them. And the light bulb that goes off on those, like you can see it on their face, if you have a good imagination, you can see the light bulb at the top of their heads, and it's just really empowering for them. And they need it, not more than, but we know it's essential that they have it in secondary.
Sure.
Because now they see graduation's a possibility, colleges is a possibility, workforce, be able to make money and take care of myself, have a family, it's possible, so we need more money.
Sure. And we're telling the treasurer, so that's a good thing. So I just wanted to make sure that that was understood and probably not one more than the other, right? This is not a reallocation necessarily of resources. This is adding more.
No, we want, yes, additional.
Okay.
Additional, yes.
I look forward to that.
Thank you.
This is really, you've been really great.
We do too.
You're kind of getting money out of us too. So my final question is kind of broad, sorry Nate. So Mr. Love kindly comes here every opportunity he gets to share knowledge and wisdom with us. And I want to understand how we can maybe evaluate and vet these ideas and suggestions here because I think some of what he's saying could have some impact. And I want to understand from your all's perspective, I think this is where this comes in, how and what, and Dr. Bedell, please feel free to chime in here, we can employ some of these strategies to understand and benefit our children.
I guess I'm trying to understand what question you had.
Sure. So Mr. Love comes and talks about reading interventionists every other board meeting that he gets the opportunity. And it seems that he's, the proof is in this pudding right here, that his concepts about reading and intervention are working, and yet he still comes every other meeting and tells us we can do more here. So, okay, yeah.
Yeah, so I would say to Mr. Love and any individual that comes here and they constantly say, this is what you need to do, help us find some funders and then we can do more because money is not finite. But the money that we do have, as you see here, we've been able to invest, and the few people that we do have, going from not having any interventionist to what now, twenty? What is it? Yeah, over the last two years. This has only been two years, right? So I would say any support to help us get more, we absolutely know that putting interventionist and making sure that we're hiring the right people will make a difference. We see that in our data. We want our data to move faster than what it's been moving, but we know that what we're doing is working. We know that we have an instructional framework in place, but help us. I'm certain you know some people out there. Help us.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I have an idea for the funding that you're talking about. It's called a bond issue, but that's a conversation for another day. So I have a couple of questions, several. And Mr. Williams, the first one's for you, and I'll apologize in advance because it's a bit of an unfair question, but it's one that sort of I think is important. As I was looking at some of the diagnostic results from fall to winter, the one thing that's clear is that if we started at a higher level in fall, we ended up at an even higher level in winter. So then you start to think about, well, what's happening over the summer? We know what's happening over the summer. How can the district get creative? Have we thought about ways? And I know it's, I say it's an unfair question because we don't have any control over what happens in a kid's home over the summer. But I'm curious, like, what can we do, if anything, to help our kids sort of retain what they have from the year prior and bring that into the classroom when they come in the fall?
Well, it's very interesting that you asked that question because we are in the process right now of planning for summer school. And one of the things that we're doing is we're bringing a camp called Kangaroo Camp to the district. And Kangaroo Camp will be for our K through two students who are at Tier Three right now. We know that if chances are they start at Tier Three with the summer regression, even if they grow, they will end up back in Tier Three. So one of the things that we're doing is being very intentional about taking those K, actually K three, those third graders that are going to fourth grade, and we're putting them in classrooms with some of our most highly effective teachers for those four weeks. And it is a literacy, the focus is literacy. So they'll get literacy for four hours a day, a little bit of ancillary, and then about an hour and a half of math. And so that's our way, because literacy is the foundation and we have to make sure that they can read. And so that's our way right now of addressing these children and then making sure that we send them home with backpacks of books. And that's one of the things that we've been working with Scholastic on, making sure that as we provide them the necessary support, that we have, we give them something that they can do once they go home, a calendar with what you should read what day and what questions the parent can ask. And then we also are going to do some parent courses in the meantime, in that four weeks' time period, so that parents can come and they can learn what it is that they need to do to support their kids' literacy skills. And so for us, it really is about getting, making sure that the foundation for our students is built. And so we have now about four hundred and sixty kids who we've identified right now at this time that are at Tier Three in second, K one and two. And so those four hundred and sixty kids are who we are targeting. And then we've got about twenty-three highly effective teachers that we've identified that we feel like would be the best people to work with the children in these four weeks. And so that's our way at this time of dealing with that issue.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. For slides seventeen and eighteen, Ms. Rivers, I have a question for you. So I was thinking about, you know, i Ready is used for tracking progress and you have the diagnostics and kids can go on and they can do, you know, sort of work through some of the problems, and that tells us where they are at these different points, right? But I was looking at your, the weekly report that you help, you know, through your leadership with the interventionists and then the individual intervention plan. And I was thinking, is there a way to not just track where kids are in terms of, you know, at this point in time and this point in time, but how we look at the individual approaches that we take to help move them along their journey so that we can isolate those strategies to progress?
So I actually created, during our P L Cs, I created a sheet that allows teachers, and we worked through this during our P L Cs, and I also encourage them to do it on their own planned times as well, where they have a document that talks about if you're close, if you're far, and then what your response is to their intervention, okay? And I don't know if that's what you were referring to.
No, keep going.
Okay. And so it's like, it's a reflective piece for the teacher and then what, as me as the teacher, what I'm going to do because this student is not getting it, is getting it, is far away from it, okay? And so the monthly P L Cs allow us to put our brains together, partner up, and then also, like I said, the coaches are available and we work through our calendar invites and everything and make sure that we're honoring their time, you know, for during their plan. And we go in and we work with those students. When I say work with those students, we also have groups sometimes that I, for instance, at King, there's a group that I'll work with sometimes, and at Northeast High School, there's a group I work with, our fifth grade, Ms. Doty's fifth grade class. So we have ways to dive into the data, but then there also, we know it takes a village, so we sit down and we figure out things together.
Let me reframe my question a little bit because I may not have done a good job of asking. I'm curious, so you've got Kid A, they're not getting it for whatever reason. I'd go deploy a tactic or a strategy to help Kid A get to the next point, and I go, wow, that worked with that kid. Is there a way to embed that data in i Ready in some way in which I can then go report out of i Ready to say, I know that this particular strategy and/or tactic works in this very specific scenario, let me go apply that when I have another kid who has that scenario?
Not, I'm going to say not yet. And the reason why I say not yet is because Philip Adams does a really good job of taking what we suggest and things that we notice, Gigi, along with Gigi, who also works with our district, and they do a good job of reporting back and making a lot of changes to i Ready for us. So that's something that we can talk to them about.
I mean, if you think there's value, it just struck me as, while you're doing all this stuff on, I'm guessing these are spreadsheets or Word documents or whatever, and that's fine, it's like the beginning of a process, but how do you go, you know, create a system
That's, I got you.
That allows you to get that information out?
That's effective. That makes a lot of sense.
They're very open to suggestions, as she said. And if we push them enough forward, they'll provide a new reporter, new update, whatever they call it, a release for your system.
Yeah, sure.
They do pretty good that.
Good push.
Cool, thank you.
Ms. Cortez?
My questions are going to seem a little 101, probably, and they kind of applied to a couple of different areas. I guess to each of the three of you, thank you for presenting, what are the results of this process that surprised you in a very positive way, things you weren't expecting? And where, like, give us a sense of one area where, you know, you look at the data and say, I'm surprised that we haven't seen this change and here's how we're going to kind of move our team forward. I mean, you probably had a set of expectations going into the implementation of each of the processes that you've engaged. Kind of, what did you expect that proved out to be a greater impact? And what is it, and where, give us a sense of something where you see an opportunity for more growth.
Might as well get some practice.
I would say that there is a lot of room to grow. We have made gains, as you can see. So for me, I look at it as what, how I can help the interventionists better track their data. And that's something that I've been speaking with the director, Dr. Christie Harrison, about, and even Dr. Davis about, giving them a little push to make sure that they are... Let me dial it back a bit. When you know your students are showing progress, it's gonna, you're gonna have proof. And so just making sure that when a student is responding to the instruction that you are providing for them and you get that down on paper, you know, whether or not it's on the document that, you know, maybe is your mandated document, but just getting it down so you can have time to reflect and see if it's working or not. So I would say doing more with that so we can provide not just intentional, but accurate responses to students because you don't want to teach something over and over again. Of course, you want things to spiral, you know, but you want to spend time on that particular skill or skills that they need help with. So that would be my takeaway.
Okay.
From my data.
Thank you. And before you step away, one, just one kind of technical question. A student who's working with an interventionist, let's say in third grade, will they work with the same interventionist when they go to fourth grade? Or does that, do the interventionist shift as they?
They do. They do. And it depends on your building. So for instance, at one of the elementary schools, they have a K through three interventionist. So if that student is not ready to move out of intervention by fourth grade, they get another interventionist. However, they plan together.
Okay. So there's a continuity component?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you so much.
No problem.
Dr. Jones?
Thank you all for the presentation. I just love being able to absorb everything and hear all the questions others have asked. The question I have is about i Ready and the access to it over breaks and summer. If I recall, last summer, I was told something that if you weren't in summer school or something that you didn't have access to i Ready, and I don't know if that's going to be the same practice going forward or there's new capacity, but I think that that might address some of the things my colleague Nate was talking about as far as being able to sort of monitor student performance over time as well as kind of watching that summer slide that we tend to see. So just wondering about that.
This is something that we can send out to parents over the summer, and we will this summer, most likely. We just need to send out their user. The kids actually know how to get in the system. It's not, you know... So I know, I have to do it at home with my son, so I know that it's something that we can make sure and have access out there. So it's just really a matter of do they have access to the technology?
Right. And like it being turned on, like sometimes you could not access it if you weren't enrolled into summer school.
Okay. We can look into that with Philip Adam and turning it on, yeah.
But if they do it during the summer, I have a daughter in the system and she loves i Ready, but I'm also understanding that we can't allow her to be on longer than thirty minutes. So I guess, so that they, I think it's a thirty-minute?
Forty-five.
Forty-five minutes.
Forty-five minutes in school.
Yeah, but at home. But so during the summer, is there a set amount of time that they need to be on it or?
We would still want the forty-five minutes a week.
Forty-five minutes is what I meant.
That's what's known that works, but at the same time, we could, you know, work with them to see what that looks like. Because in some cases, you can turn it off so they don't overuse it, you know, as well, so.
All right. So we'll look into that.
That's why that speaks to the pass rates that I was talking about too, because you can have kids, if they're on for, you know, five hundred minutes or whatever, but the pass rates are twenty-five percent, you know that they're not...
And then what it does is it locks them out of the domain, so then they don't get that experience. So that's why you would want to be very careful about them being on it too long because then it'll lock them out and they can't go and get into comprehension or vocabulary or whatever's next.
Mr. Hogan?
Ms. Davis, you might, sorry. It's reading and math today, right? Is there a plan to pull in science and social studies as well?
So on i Ready, it's just reading and math at this time. So what we do for science and social studies is basically formative assessments where they take a pre and a post, you know, each quarter. So that's how we do it. But it doesn't have, we don't have it on a system like this.
Is that a possibility?
Well, we have Discovery Ed, which is our science and social study resource, and so there's formative assessments inside of there, and they're map-like so that way that students are getting practice because the science, they have to graph and chart and do a lot of things on the map assessment that gives them the practice through Discovery Ed.
Do we get similar insights from that tool that we get with i Ready?
Not, it's not as data-rich as i Ready is, but it gives us, it's more so, I have a science coordinator who goes in and he can pull it. So we look at usage and we look at those things, but most of that data goes straight to the teacher.
Interesting.
This is district.
Does that R F P out?
Yeah, we do have an R F P out, so that can make a difference on an assessment platform. So then we may see science and social studies based on what's chosen.
Got you. Thank you. Sorry.
Well, I was just going to follow up with Dr. Lurie and Ms. Heil on that original question.
question. Sorry.
If I understand your question correctly, I can say, one of the things that was really an eye-opening for me is when the district made it mandatory for our principals to send their co-teaching pairs to a co-teaching training together. It's so often that our special education teachers get this training on co-teaching, but who also needs to hear that is our general education teachers. And so when they all came together and we provided ten different sessions, when they came together, that was an eye-opening experience for a lot of those co-teaching pairs. And what we saw as a result of that is now they feel a lot more comfortable, that they can have conversations with their co-teaching partners about parity and about, okay, now how can I give you what I know far as this content and how can you help me break it down for kids and scaffold? And we just see co-teaching just in a much better place. We're having co-teachers read out, reach out to our instructional coordinators and our CIPD coordinators and say, okay, well, can you come in and show us what parallel teaching looks like? And that's one thing that we talked about in that training, we don't wanna just talk about it, we have the, we have the staff now that we can go in there and demonstrate that. And that training, we took them through, getting up, breaking out, going into stations, going into alternative teaching, and we showed that it is possible. And we did it with ninety adults at one point. And so, and we also shared the same experience with our building administrators, and I think that, them seeing that and buying into what this can really do, isn't, I mean, it's going to do great things for speed, we're seeing that right now, but it's benefiting all of those students that are in those co-teaching environments. So that was, that was something that was beyond what I expected, and so I'm just looking forward to continuing that type of training.
Thank you very much.
So I was pleasantly surprised in looking at the math data for our English language learners and seeing that at, at the fall administration, we had several grade levels where over thirty percent of our English language learners were in tier two, and then seeing at winter that we had some grade levels, fifty, sixty, seventy-three percent of our English language learners are at tier two, which is, that's a really great place to, for them to be starting off and then to see that growth. And I would also piggyback on Dr. Lorie's statement that co-teaching, once it is a message from up above and you're partnering that with another large academic division expecting to see this, then it's an expectation everywhere. And so we've really been able to capitalize on the professional development, the understanding of administrators, what co-teaching looks like, what should be expected of both parties in the room. That's really been a game changer for us, I would say. We still need a lot of tightening up, there's still a lot of work to do, particularly at the secondary level, where we don't have the same access to professional development with those teachers as we do with elementary ESOL teachers. So that's kind of what we're looking at then, like how we're gonna really dig into middle school and high school, and Dr. Shepherd has charged us with re-envisioning the way we educate English language learners at the middle school and high school level, so we're looking at how we're going to address our intermediate English language learners, and instead of sheltering them, providing them with more access to grade level peers, grade level instruction, and their English-speaking peers. So we're looking at what that's going to look like for those students, and co-teaching will be a big part of that. So I think we'll, that'll probably, that'll propel us into what we're looking and expecting to see for middle school, so.
Thank you.
Dr. Jones?
I just wanna give a quick kudos, Dr. Bedell and Dr. Shepherd and your team. I'm really impressed with the content on iReady, so the types of stories or reading comprehension prompts that the students are given, the diversity of content and the cultural sensitivity and all of that is just amazing, and it really makes a difference, because I've heard my son come back and say, look what I learned about this famous person, or I learned about this story, did you know this, like, and he's testing, but he's absorbing the messages. So thank y'all for taking that into consideration, I didn't have this when I was coming up, so my testing prompts were very different, so thank you, thank y'all for that, for putting that level of care in that.
I have just a few questions. I wanted to ask about the English language learners. Ms. Heil, can you remind me what proportion of our students in total are classified or identified as ELL?
So we hover between like twenty-seven and thirty percent of total district enrollment.
And of that, what percentage would you say are students who did not have any education experience prior to entering our system?
That's a good question. So I would say, previous to this presidential administration, we would have had about half of our English language learners were considered refugees or had refugee status, and about, about that percentage had been in the country less than three years. So close to fifty percent of our ELL population was pretty, you know, like newcomers. This, it has changed since then, so I would say we're probably maybe a third.
Okay.
Or like that don't currently have the status but came with that status. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Like currently, our SLIF, we call them SLIF classrooms, students with limited or interrupted formal education, those are smaller rooms, we've moved to half-day programs, which is working really well. But previous to 2017, we had seen a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and fifty percent increases in that student enrollment, so.
Thank you, and I have a couple more questions on this. So when I look at, if I look at the diagnostic tiers for the ELL by grade level and you had us, you kind of were pointing out that there is, you know, that the, there are gains in the seventh and eighth grade years at the middle school level, like slide twelve on reading, but, but at a lesser rate than you see in the elementaries. Is that because, does that have to do with the nature of those students being more recent arrivals, or, like, what do you think is, contributes to that?
So that is, that is all English language learners, so our SLIF students and our beginner, intermediate, and advanced students.
That's everyone in there.
Yeah, so it's hard to tell, like, who is moving up. I would say that first, first life in particular, because they're in seventh grade and have had very limited access to schooling, that while they may grow, they may not be getting out of tier three.
Right.
It's such a large gap for some of them. So if you're asking where the growth is coming from, it's hard to say, but that is what I'm looking to dig into and seeing where, if we can find some trends or some commonalities as to where we're seeing students move, what are the best practices right there, and then expanding that. But I think, like I was saying before, the movement of intermediate students to mainstream classes with co-teaching support is really going to push our teachers, classroom teachers, and really, above all, provide a sense of community and integration at Northeast Middle that we have not seen before.
That's helpful. And then I have a question about the interventionists, just to make sure I'm understanding, on the interventionist, Dr. Bedell, are they, are they coming in and spending extensive time within that school setting in the day? Are they primarily providing a lot of support to the teachers who have the daily charge of educating those students? So I wanna understand, are they, they're coaching modeling for the teachers, are they really more engaged in the direct instruction?
Okay, and so for elementary, if I'm hearing you correctly, there are times that the interventionist push in, and they have, that they're seeing their students that they've identified to make sure that it's effective, okay? And they're not just coming in as a co-teacher, because then the, the attention to the data isn't gonna be where it should be, if that makes sense, okay? So like, say you have five to eight students for this particular session on your caseload, you're gonna push in and you're gonna work with those students, and the teachers and the interventionists have planned and they know how this works, and it's February, so they definitely have it down, you know, to a science. However, there is the pull-out model where the interventionist pull their students and they go to their designated area and they provide intervention to those students for about thirty minutes, okay? Middle and high school, they have classes, so those students come to their teachers, forty-five minutes.
Okay, thank you. I, I think the other question I have is, because you are doing quite a bit of, you've got quite a few classrooms doing co-teaching, and so, I mean, it seems that most of our teachers were probably not trained in that kind of how to do that. That's not how teachers are trained, right? In higher education, they're trained to run their room and go in their room and own their room, and so is that part of this extensive professional development that's been discussed in terms of helping teachers understand, how do you effectively do that together? And because I, I can't imagine, you know, a lot of our teachers, we have a lot of young teachers coming into our system, and I'm not sure what proportion of the more newer teachers are involved in the co-teaching, but I wonder if there are particular hurdles in terms of that training?
I'll let them speak to the co-teaching model because they don't do the co-teaching model.
What I'm noticing, and I learned this through the KCPS experience, when I had the opportunity to be in there with the new, newly graduated educational professionals, and what I heard from them was, you know, they talk about co-teaching in our, in our higher education classrooms, but you know what, I've really never seen it. So I am finding that a lot of our new teachers, they know about it, they hear about the research, they know that it's beneficial for students, but they've never actually done it. And there are six models, according to Maryland Friends, but there's only really four, and honestly, I, next year, I'd like to focus on three, because the four ones that I shared with you earlier, station teaching, parallel teaching, team teaching, and alternative teaching, team teaching is the one that is the least effective of the highly effective ones, and that's because it's whole group instruction. But those other three co-teaching models, it's all small group, it's all small group, and that's where we get the most from kids. That's where we can assess their growth, that's where we can check for their understanding, and that's where kids feel safe. In making mistakes, having risks, that's where it happens. So I know for next year, when we do this co-teaching across the district, we're saying, okay, we introduced the four, but now we really wanna zoom in on the three, because our data shows it's the small group instruction that is, is more effective for our students. And so we're going to continue to work with teachers who have never done this, and the new ones that are coming in, they're coming in at a good time, because they're gonna, they're gonna get it.
That's great, thank you.
So a couple of things as we wrap up this, this component of the workshop. Allison, I think you remember when Dr. Shepherd came in and we sat down and kind of talked about this direction we wanted to go in and the things that we wanted to do differently, and you were one of the early adopters. You got on board, you, you said, hey, this all makes sense, and we're seeing a significant difference in how the ELL students are performing and how they're progressing, and I'm, so I'm really proud of you, because you've been able to adapt, and it's hard when you have had the amount of changes that a lot of people have experienced in this school system, to get on board and to say, I'm gonna be an early adopter because it's the right thing to do. So I want you to know, I'm really proud of you. Our two other ladies, Wakita and, why can't I? Rea, um, Wakita, you're, this is, this is your first year, Dr. Lorie. Right? Is this your, this is, is this your, is this your, is this your first?
This is, this is my second year, but this is my first year truly leading the instruction for special education across the district.
Okay, phenomenal, and I think for, so both of you, it's your second year, right? And here's the reason why I'm saying this, because we had our job fair on this past Saturday, and it was a beautiful thing, the amount of people who showed up, but it wasn't just about the quantity this year, it was about the quality. And we had some really solid people that are looking to, wanna come and work in our school district. None of this is happening if you don't have quality people leading these educators. Those teachers go out and they talk. When we redesigned our professional development at Southeast High School a couple of years ago, and we had built it out for three hundred and seventy-five people and ended up having over five hundred show up in that first year, and then the following year it moved to over eight hundred, that's because teachers see the value. But the people who are leading this work are the people over here, it's all of these folks. And so you don't have this kind of success if you're not able to attract highly competent people, that other adults will say, I believe I can learn and grow from these kind of people, and I wanna be a part of this organization. And when you heard the presentation today, the passion, the ability to handle and answer these questions even on their first attempts at doing this, it tells you that we got quality people in this school system, and we know that quality people will help give us quality results on behalf of the kids that we serve in this community. So I couldn't be any prouder of what I'm seeing and the evolution of where this district is going, but none of that is possible without these people, and I, you know, I know oftentimes superintendents take the credit and they get the credit, but I'm nothing without these people, and I mean that.
That, yes, I'm sorry? Yes.
To echo, to echo Dr. Bedell's embarrassment, he made me think about the service that I've had on a previous school board, and the realization that I've never seen gains like this in iReady, and I've never seen the level of focus and attention on the data side. I mean, truly, like, this was a very, I don't need to go into that. Nevertheless, what you're doing is tremendous, so just another round of kudos in comparison in my brain. So thank you, Dr. Bedell, for your leadership and all that.
Thank you, everyone, for this monitoring meeting for these substantial reports, we are very appreciative. Dr. Bedell, there are several items for the February twenty-sixth business meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have three items that we will ask the board to take action on next month, the EBS healthcare contract of one point three million, budget amendment number one, and the Belfonte contract amendment, which is for our ice cream services.
Thank you, and with that, this brings us to the conclusion of our agenda for this evening, so if there is no objective, objection, the meeting will be adjourned and we will see everyone again on February twenty-sixth. Thank you.
We'll see you Monday, twenty-second.
So, yeah, so back to the other room.